Tiffin City Council Meeting, Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 to order invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Wilkins.
Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Here.
Jones?
Present.
Councilmember Leopard?
Here.
Councilmember Perry?
Here.
Councilmember Reisner?
Here.
Councilmember Spar?
Here.
Councilmember Thacker?
Here.
Let the record show, all seven members of council are present. Minutes from February 6th, 2023, regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any questions, corrections, deletions? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Committee reports, Finance Committee, Councilmember Reisner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilmember Leopard.
Thank you, Madam President. Law and Community Planning Committee meeting was held February 14th, 2023 in the City Council chambers for the purpose of discussing mayor's request for legislation 23-8, 23-9, and 23-10. Meeting was called to order at 4:50 PM. Tending were committee members Steve Leopard and Vicky Wilkins, City Administrator Dale Thornton, Director of Law Brent Howard, City Councilmember Ken Jones, Parks and Recreation Director Bryce Kuhn, Director of Communications and Constituent Services Nick Dutrow, Development Coordinator Adam Gilmore, representing TSEP, Seneca Regional Chamber Executive Director Bryce Riggs, Director of Internal Operations, operations Deb Martorona, Stakeholder Relations and Marketing Manager, Seneca Regional Planning Marissa Stevens, Lee Wilkinson, and Mayor Don Yonatuno, joined by phone. Mayor's request for legislation 23-8, Hedges Boyer Hillside Reconstruction. Parks and Recreation Director Bryce Kuhn presented to the committee a project to build a retaining wall on the east side of the hill on Summit Street and will also be used as an entrance sign for Hedges Boyer Park on the north side. The retaining wall has become necessary as erosion has taken its toll on the hillside with the removal of diseased trees. Mud that has washed upon the sidewalk has been a constant concern and much labor dedicated to the removal and maintenance. There are other benefits to the project beyond the control of erosion, and that is safety. The sidewalk will be widened in certain areas so that pedestrians will be further away from traffic, and sightlines will be improved. All work will be on city-owned property. An adjacent property owner has been presented with the engineer's drawings and is supportive of the project. The retaining wall will be concrete blocks installed, much like dry stack Lego blocks. This product has been used in two other city projects to the satisfaction of personnel. The maximum height of the wall will be five foot. Heights are dependent upon elevations and terracing. Total length of the wall could be as much as 2,000 foot. The wall will have a four-inch drainage tile that will empty into an existing tile and will not cause any additional flooding of the lower level. The retaining wall project, including the widening of the sidewalk in certain areas, is estimated to cost $64,817. Director Kuhn has obtained a $32,000 grant and is prepared to use park capital dollars that are already allocated to finance the project. Councilmember Wilkins introduced a motion to authorize the Director of Law to prepare legislation for the specifications, construction, and bidding of the Hedges Boyer Hillside Reconstruction Project. The motion will contain an emergency, was seconded by Leopard and approved by a vote of two to zero. Mayor's request for legislation 23-9, Tourism Contract for the City of Tiffin. For the past few years, the City of Tiffin has provided 25,000 to the Seneca Regional Chamber of Commerce for tourism-related service and seeks to pursue a long-term partnership. The city is seeking a three-year contract with the Chamber for tourism and related services. Executive Director Riggs reported on the benefits that the city receives from the funding, including the little things that are overlooked. Examples include maps, kiosk tours and related services, the community calendar, City of Tiffin website, tree program, and the promotional benefit of the community. To be included in the contract will be the continuation of a presentation to the City Council from Destination Seneca County. The city has found the partnership to be effective and efficient and look forward to continued success. Councilmember Wilkins introduced a motion to enter into an agreement with the Seneca Regional Chamber of Commerce to sign a three-year contract in the amount of $25,000 per year for tourism-related services. Leopard seconded the motion, and the motion passed two to zero. Mayor's request for legislation 23-10, CRA Exemption Agreement. In 2016, the City of Tiffin approved a post-1994 CRA tax exemption for the Tim Hortons property at 1630 West Market Street for a 10-year period. Director of Law Brent Howard brought it to the city's attention that the property was sold in April 2022, and according to the CRA Tax Exemption Agreement, the city, the former property owner and the new property owner need to approve an amendment to the agreement in order to maintain the tax exemption. According to TSEP President and CEO Aaron Montz, the company and the property is in compliance with the CRA agreement, and the new property owner is in agreement. Development Coordinator Gilmore verified that the information was correct and is seeking approval of the amendment. Councilwoman Wilkins presented a motion to the CRA Exemption Agreement. Leopard seconded, and the motion passed two to zero. No further business, meeting adjourned to 5:19 PM.
Thank you. Any questions on Councilman Leopard's report? Thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes, thank you. The Recreation and Public Property Committee was held on Tuesday, February 14th at 4:30 PM to discuss mayor's request for legislation 23-14 regarding the new federal sirens and anything, any other business that may come before them. Attending were committee members Ken Jones and Vicky Wilkins, Mayor Don Yonatuno via phone, Director of Law Brent Howard, City Administrator Dale Thornton, Director of Communications and Constituent Services Nick Dutrow, Lieutenant Matt Gray of the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division, and council members Steve Leopard and John Spar, also participating in his role as the Seneca County EMA Administrator. Councilmember Wilkins read mayor's request for legislation 23-14 regarding new federal sirens. Councilmember Wilkins then asked Nick Dutrow to explain the invoices that he presented to council. Dutro explained there are quotes for new equipment from Sound Solutions and separate quotes for installation only from Sound Systems, and two quotes from Klaus Electric for installation. The quote from Sound Solution includes installation of equipment only and does not include moving a pole at the fairground site, so there would be cost above and beyond that. The Klaus Electric quotes came in a little lower altogether. Options were offered for just the fairgrounds pole and also per pole for all of the installations. The cost of the equipment is only, is, equipment only is $56,810.40. The installation with Klaus is $28,286 for a total of $85,096.40. Dutro mentioned that we could just do the fairgrounds pole since that is not currently working at all, and that would cost $22,538.60. He did mention that if we waited to do the other three poles, the equipment costs could increase in the future. Lieutenant Matt Gray explained they have been working, or they have been having issues with all of the older sirens and believes they are probably 40 to 50 years old. It is difficult to source the parts. It is very old technology. It takes two people to lift the equipment in a bucket truck. Newer equipment is easier to access and very current technology and easier to get parts should they need an update. Dale Thornton indicated the team has done a great job nursing the old equipment that we have, but it believes that they are past, they are past it at this point. Councilmember Leopard asked how many sirens we had in the, we had in the city. We have eight. He noted this has been coming for a long time. He asked if it would be a wise idea to put away funds each year for the replacement. Dutro said, "We purchased additional equipment for the four we have that are updated. The equipment could be used and is similar to what we are looking at today, and that the expenses for these is not like a road, a road or a bridge." Thornton said, "These four need immediate attention." Lieutenant Gray said, "We have four that are, that are in good shape and have gotten upgrades. They were put in with Homeland Security money." Dutro asked Councilmember Spar if there are opportunities for grant funding. Spar shared that funding for outdoor warning sirens are the last on the list that are voted on. Typically, all the money is gone when they get to them. Spar said, "There is no funding available." Spar also noted that moving the siren at the fairground is a benefit to us because it would be hooked into a generator at the public safety building so that it would have power even during a storm. It would, it would, it also would not cost the city to be hooked into that generator. Wilkins asked if the money for this needs to come out of capital and would it need to be appropriated? Thornton said, "This will need to be locally funded and that council would need to appropriate." Law Director Howard asked if this has been bid out in the best interest of saving money for the city. Lieutenant Gray said that the equipment from Sound Systems is essentially a state bid. It is the exact same price from federal or Sound Systems. Law Director Howard asked if this was a state purchasing program, if we purchased all of these. Lieutenant Gray said, "We would need to look on the state procurement site," but reiterated that this is the best price. Thornton clarified that we are essentially supplying the equipment to the installer. Law Director Howard recommended that this should be authorized by an ordinance. We have an ordinance that authorizes a contracts using the state purchasing program through Sound Solutions and enter an agreement with Klaus Electric to install them. Thornton asked Lieutenant, Thornton asked Lieutenant Gray if we think these are in danger of failing this year. Lieutenant Gray said, "This is a tough question, but the one at the fairground is currently not working and needs replaced immediately." Councilmember Jones asked if this was an emergency, and it was discussed that this is an emergency because one siren is not working. As the committee chair, Wilkins instructed Law Director Howard to prepare legislation for the purchase and installation of four federal sirens, as well as to work with the Director of Finance for appropriation. Dutro noted that he spoke with the Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman, and she agreed we should do all four. Councilmember Wilkins opened up for any more discussion. With no further business, the meeting adjourned at 4:50 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Wilkins? Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker?
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. And Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Spar?
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee of the Hold, does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the hold meeting? Seeing none, we are now under reports of the officers. Her Honor Mayor Don Yonatuno.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to change up my order a little bit this evening. We have a special guest with us. Former Mayor Aaron Montz, who is now the CEO of TSEP, has a special guest with him. If you'd like to come up and introduce her.
Well, as we all know, Amy Reinhardt announced her retirement after eight-plus years of leadership over downtown Tiffin. And we went through a very extensive search process at TSEP. Nearly 20 applicants, and I can say they were extremely highly qualified candidates. We did our internal evaluations and then formed a larger search committee because I'm a believer that we need community input and leadership input in the community. While I'm the CEO, it could be my decision, but it shouldn't be our decision. This should be a community decision. From those highly qualified applicants, we narrowed things down, held two rounds of interviews, and came to our selection, who I have standing behind me this evening. And I'm excited to announce the new downtown manager, Donna Gross. Donna takes over with some serious chops that she brings to us and to the team. She's going to do great things, the organization continuing to lead downtown Tiffin to even greater heights. So I'm going to let Donna introduce herself, and if you want to grill her with questions, you're all welcome too.
Thanks, Aaron. I'm used to the questions. It was a grilling interview process. Thank you. Again, my name is Donna Gross, and I'm a resident here in Tiffin. I graduated from Heidelberg University in 1992 with degrees in Public Relations and Business Administration, and both my boys have, one just graduated from Heidelberg and the other is still attending. About three years ago, I opened up a business in the Laird Building, Relivee Bar Studio, which is a small boutique fitness studio, and I'm just so happy to be part of downtown Tiffin and be part of this amazing team of TSEP. And just keep going with the wonderful momentum that Tiffin has growing economically, and I'm just really happy to be here, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you. Any questions?
Donna, it's a pleasure to welcome you here this evening. And as I told you during the interview, that I love your positive personality and outgoing outreach to people, and I think it's a real asset that you are a small business owner dealing with downtown business owners. I think that is just such a great asset for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you.
And so, looking forward to working with you.
Me too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Moving on. We are still taking applications for Nick's position here as the Director of Communications and Constituent Services through this Friday. Completed application along with resume and cover letter with references need to be into our HR Director Deb Reamer by February 24th. As the city prepares for new office holders in January, I am doing my part to help with this transition. As time allows, I am creating information sheets on various categories and how things are done. I know when I first came in here, I was asking questions constantly, and I remember this. And so I am now starting to develop little help sheets that I think, and that'll be on my computer. So whoever takes over will have them right there, and hopefully that will help a little bit. We're still continuing with our department head reports this evening. And so second up is Nick Dutro, who is still momentarily our Director of Communications and Constituent Services. So, and so, Nick, take it away.
All right, very good. Thank you so much for having me, counsel. First off, I will apologize. I don't have props. Deb Reamer really showed me up, so no props this, this time. I'm sorry. So I think that I can probably say it's been a memorable year since I joined as the, as the first Director of Communications and Constituent Services. As some of you maybe are aware, previously, we did not have a person devoted to communications. I handled that position from the communications standpoint when I was at TSEP. TSEP had a contract with the city to handle press releases and to take care of some of the social media and that kind of thing for the city through a contract that they'd had for a few years. So when I came on to economic development, that was one of the roles that I played with my journalism, or my background in journalism led well to, to that. So coming in, you know, our first year, I think it's certainly, again, been memorable. We've had some changes in city, city leadership, both in the mayor and many council members. We've also had a lot of events that happened in 2022. The city doesn't usually host a lot of events itself. Usually our events are done by nonprofits or other community organizations, but this year, as we were celebrating our 200th bicentennial, again, it was a great opportunity for us to showcase a position that would help to promote those things. And really, I do hope that this year, you all saw with, with my time here, that it was necessary for us to increase our workforce and add somebody to focus strictly on communications, as well as provide support for the day-to-day of the mayor and the city administrator. So I'm going to start with the constituent services side. Again, when this position used to be kind of an administrative support for the mayor primarily, and there's a significant portion of my day that's still spent on those things. Do things like scheduling, being at weddings, or putting together proclamations, doing things like meeting notices, nominations. For this year, I helped the mayor with 15, the mayors, excuse me, with 15 weddings and 31 proclamations, and you're welcome. I know you all look forward to all those whereas's every couple of weeks, so you're, you're very welcome.
We had a heady late week. Don't jinx it.
You know, as, as well as that, one of the things that through an increased visibility in this role, I'm able to be a proxy at meetings. So if there's ever a meeting that City Administrator Thornton or the mayor cannot attend, I tend to fill in those spots, and that's worked out really well, I think, for us to kind of have another utility player who can be at those meetings. I also just provide support for some of our organizations. I help with the Tree Commission. I sit on the TMAC Board, the Municipal Arts Commission. I also have a role at the Senate County Tourism Council, the Downtown Marketing Committee, and the Downtown Design Committees. So I, I play a role in all of those, most of which is an ex officio. I'm not a voting member of most of those. I am on TMAC. As that was built into that, is that there is either the mayor or the city administrator proxy is able to vote on TMAC's board. And then I also just provide support for, you know, events. For instance, you'll see up there, the mayor had met, had gone to the city schools when Fran Dwein was in town. So unfortunately, she did not get to meet Dolly Parton. That's a cutout, for those who can see that. Dolly was not there that day, unfortunately, but they were able to interact with the youth in that way. And so one of the things is that I attend a lot of these events. I take pictures. We do some meet and greets, that kind of thing. For me, though, I think the, the most important thing that I do is in the communications side. So again, this is a real holdover from my time at TSEP. You know, I think that there's a number of tasks that I do that, again, website, social media, writing press releases. These are, these are things in my background through my, through my schooling that I, that I'm understanding and aware of, but also have a huge support for, for the city. And being able to do that for us on a full-time basis is, I think, really important for us moving forward. Some of the things that, that I think, again, why that's important, this provides a point of contact for the media. So when we have reporters who are trying to get in touch with us, they're not just calling to any department heads saying, "Hey, can you give me this?" Typically, they contact me, and then I will either direct them to the right person or get them the answer. A lot of times, I can get them the answer. So it's nice having, again, me in that position to interact with them. And again, when we have someone here who can write press releases, who's able to work with the media, what it really does is gives an opportunity for us to get out our message. Really, I like to think the first time, the right message, so that they're not having to come back and forth to separate council members, to department heads. Ultimately, this saves time for our employees to focus on what they do while that communications person handles those other, those other tasks. Looking at press releases, just in, in focus. In 2022, I wrote 91 press releases. So in comparison, from 2019 to 2021, I did 85 altogether. So you'll see there's quite a jump in the number that we put out. Now, what does that mean? That typically means that, you know, I'm putting out something to the media that says, "Hey, we're doing a road closure," or here's something smaller that typically they wouldn't have shipped over to TSEP to have them cover that kind of thing. So again, having someone here, we get out more information to the media by having that person in-house. My, my reach or the number of stories that were created from these, from these press releases, 355 last year. So that is posts on the web, that is stories on our newspaper, that's stories in the Seneca News Daily. Those kinds of things. We also do a monthly, the, the mayor does a monthly report on WTTF. So that is included in, in that kind of reach of where our stories go. Seventeen times, we were on the news, on the WTOL News or NBC 24, one of our regional television news stations this year. And many of those, I helped to coordinate those interviews that the reporters had. So again, having that person here who can get that coordinated is great. In comparison, 50 stories and nine TV segments for 2019 to 2021. The second big thing that I do is social media. So every day, or we try to every day, have some kind of post. Be that a, you know, sometimes that's, that's as little as a, as a road closure notice. Sometimes that is a story. Sometimes like yesterday, we just do, you know, wishing everyone a happy President's Day. They're little things, but it keeps engagement up. And again, managing that from an in-person, you know, here, again, saves the mayor quite a bit of time. Mayor Montz was doing a lot of that himself prior to my coming on. So that saved him a lot of time in the day-to-day, and it also saves Mayor Yonatuno in the same way. We have four main social media accounts that we post to, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn. LinkedIn is our newest. We did not have a LinkedIn presence until this year, at least not an official one. So I've added that. We don't have a whole lot of followers on LinkedIn, which is fine, but we do get information out that way. We don't have a lot of followers on Instagram either. That seems to be our kind of smallest social network. And that could just be the nature of what we do. Government is not the most exciting thing. Instagram tends to be very picture-focused. That's not a lot of what we do. I would like to see in the future that, you know, we have more original content that lends itself well to that, to that site, but we'll see how it goes. Facebook continues to be our biggest place where we have interaction with, with our constituents. And as you'll see on that graph there, quite a jump this year. So we had 116,425 visits to our Facebook page in 2022 in comparison, 15,400 in 2020 and 18,700 in 2021. So quite a few more people checking out our page. We, the numbers have gone up at the other pages. It will say Twitter's numbers are, are getting strange because we're seeing some people leaving Twitter. We're seeing some of our followers follow as, as people are leaving that social network. One thing I will say, as most of you know, these social media networks are free, so we're not paying anything. We, at this point, have not paid to get verified on any of these networks. So there is no investment aside from my time into these. Looking at followers, again, much like just the visits, followers have continued to increase. We, we've seen quite a few more people go to our Facebook page, become a fan of it, or, or follow it, which is, which is great news. It means more people are wanting to see the, the content that we're putting out there. As far as reach goes, that is the number of people seeing all of our information. We had 1,779,000 people who were reached by our, our posts on Facebook in 2022. So a pretty good number. I can't imagine what like, you know, MTV's numbers are. I'm sure they're doing a little bit better than we are, but I think we, we did a nice job of reaching out to folks this year. So I'm very proud of that. My biggest accomplishment, my biggest task this year was in updating our website. So when I was at TSEP, we began the process of updating websites for a number of entities, going back when we did the rebranding for Tiffin and the county. That was something that TSEP helped to lead. And likewise, TSEP came in and wanted to redo their website and found it to be an opportunity for us to redo some other websites as well. So tiffinohio.org So tiffinohio.gov got a refresh. I started working on that process, again, when I was at TSEP. We contracted with a company called Triad. They're from Cuyahoga Falls. We were really impressed with their work, and I think that they really achieved something with the refresh on our website. It's a lot more easy to find things on there. It has a, you know, more welcoming, I think, look and feel to it right now. I hope that people are able to use it in a way that was, that's really conducive to them. So what you're seeing here is just a look at what it looks like on the desktop versus the mobile. Both of those have a moving video as you come in, which showcases our community, and I think that's just so cool that you can see. The way we set it up is it has images of our parks, our downtown. It has an image of our industrial park, as well as our commercial district in the Westgate area. So we really tried to encompass as much of our community, as much as Tiffin, as possible in that few-second video that pops up when you open the site. So I hope everyone really enjoys that. That was part of the package of photography that I had put together this year. So we did hire out some photography, as well as got some drone footage. Those were things that I couldn't necessarily do. Those aren't my expertise necessarily, but we were able to use a local company in getting all of that, and I think it really helped to refresh the site and gave us a great deal of kind of stock images and art that we can use, both on the website and just in our regular communication. Likewise, as far as video goes, while he was in office, Mayor Mons and I had contracted with a group called CGI Digital. They provided a series of free community videos. They are accessible on the website. Those were ad-supported through local businesses. Some local businesses took part in that, which was great. I'm glad that they were able to get ads for those. And then we got some nice little videos that people can see for our community. So I think that was a benefit for kind of everyone. Website traffic, you know, we saw increases in that as well. I think part of that is that we just had more content on our website this year than we have in the past. Obviously, a lot of this is coming from people clicking on those links on social media for press releases, that kind of thing. So I can't necessarily attribute that to the website, though I do hope that there was some correlation there. As you can see, some increase in our web traffic. I do want to go back and thank, though, all of our department heads. While a lot of the content that we had on our website was good content initially, I did go through and do rewrites of a lot of the information that was on there. And I couldn't have done really any of that without all of our department heads providing their input on what they thought was best to be on our website, that best served our constituents. So I thank all of them for their time in assisting me on that project. So looking ahead, the biggest change is that come this time, hopefully next month, I will no longer be the Director of Communications. So obviously, I set this up so I just had to do the one report and no more as the communications director. I want to, first off, thank the mayor, thank all of council for their appointment and their confirmation of me for the city administrator. I'm incredibly excited to take on that position. I've got some big shoes to fill. So Dale Thornton, thank you so much for your guidance, your friendship as I enter that new position. I think Dale has quietly been training me for this for a while, just in terms of getting me up to speed about what he does on the day-to-day. A lot of that was so that I could answer people's questions when they called, but I think, too, he was thinking, you know, maybe Nick's ready for that. I don't know. So I look forward to that. Obviously, we are in the midst of hiring somebody for the communications position. We do have some applications now. I am looking forward to seeing what that next person can do. I think there's a lot we can do in the social media space, for sure. I will admit, that was never my forte. I was always kind of more of a press release writer guy, but I also know this community really well, so I was able to come in first day and already have a knowledge of a lot of the inner workings of city government. So that may take some training for whomever the next person is, but I have great hopes that we're going to have a really good candidate who's going to fill that role and provide support for all of us. So with all of that said, I look forward to continuing to support all of you, and I know that the next person will be a great asset for city council moving forward. So with that, any questions? For me, I think I stayed under time. Yes?
You might have said it, and I get accused of not listening at home and even here. What is the official date that you're taking over? The exact date, if you will, in case someone asks?
So Dale's last day, and correct me if I'm wrong, is March 9. So I will be effectively coming in at that time. That was the way that it was written, and I believe that March 13 was written as my official start date.
Okay.
Now, just for your information, the way that the codified ordinances are written, if there's any period where we don't have a city administrator, the mayor can sign documents and things for the city administrator. So we are covered in that couple-of-day gap between, but I will be helping to run things as much as possible in that very short time period.
And one more. Who is on the city's search committee?
So not so much a search committee, per se. The folks who'll be handling the interview will be myself, City Administrator Thornton, as much as he's around for that, the mayor, and the HR director.
Okay.
And we very well may bring in the department heads. Depending on the candidates we have, we may bring in the department heads for a second interview down the line. Obviously, this person will be interacting with all of them on a very regular basis, so we want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with whomever that person is.
Any, you guys have a date that you want to get your positions?
March 9. No, not necessarily. Again, it depends. If we have a candidate who's really exceptional, and we feel like they, and they aren't able to start right away, I can handle both duties. It will be a challenge, absolutely, but, you know, we'll cross that bridge if we have to. So I don't want to leave anyone a situation where they aren't able to take some time to let their former employer know before they come in, or whatever the case may be. Now, I don't want to wait six months either, so I am hoping that we're able to find somebody who's good and is ready to come into that role in a pretty quick amount of time.
I will try not to bother Nick too much during that timeframe, because I get used to him not being right outside my door.
Any other questions?
I did want to comment when you mentioned the videos, though. If you haven't had a chance to go to the website, look at the videos. You don't realize how beautiful Tiffin really is until you see those drone shots and the videos. It's really, we're very lucky to have such a pretty town. But since you're right in here, you don't notice it as much, but the videos are awesome. They're really nice to see. So if you get a chance, check those out.
Thank you. And Council President Boyle introduces one of the videos that CGI did. So they came on and were filming in the period that she was acting mayor. So we very much appreciate your time on camera.
I appreciate you being my hair and makeup guy.
You know, it was a challenge, but I...
Nick, how does my hair look? He's like, eh.
Two daughters.
He's like, maybe.
Never loved.
No, thank you, Nick. Super excited for your transition.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One question, Nick, or the mayor. Is it a requirement that the candy jar remain full in the city administrator's office?
It will be full when I leave.
Take total credit for that, though. That's Halloween candy. Some of that.
As long as my kids don't visit, I'll try to keep it full. No promises.
Is that why he's so popular? Anything else for Nick before I move on? Nice job, Nick. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention, with TSEP, their annual meeting is March 2 at Camden Falls, and the city will be in attendance with eight of us attending. I'm not sure if you're aware of this one, Bird Scooters. I know you all know about the Bird Scooters. They are discontinuing their service in Tiffin, and that will end March 10. And so we won't be seeing them littering the sidewalks pretty soon. Haven't seen them lately at all anyways. So they're pulling services, so that will...
Reasoning.
Did not hear. Dale, do you...
Seemed pretty popular.
Did you hear a reason?
They're beginning to concentrate on different markets. They're downsizing, as is Lift, another company that does the same thing. I think they're finding it hard in these economic times to be everywhere, and so they're scaling back to probably the larger communities.
Interesting. Thank you. Upcoming events in February, well, this one took place. I'd like to congratulate the chamber on another successful event. Their Casino Royale was held on February 11 and was a sold-out event, and I'm not sure if you've caught it or not, but they are almost at, if they haven't already surpassed it, they are at 500 members. They were at 497 the other day. They may be at 500, so that is outstanding. Nick and I will be taking an American Red Cross Adult First Aid, CPR, and AED blended course offered in conjunction with the chamber, and we have to complete an online portion prior to the in-person training. When done, we will receive a two-year adult first aid, CPR, AED certification, and will be able to help someone in need. We both have tried to do the online part. It cut me out after about two hours. Nick, it wasn't even that successful, and so hopefully I don't have to start over. I was doing it with COVID last Friday, so it was not a pleasant experience to have to redo that. And so hopefully, it's back up. I've been emailing back and forth with them. And also, I wanted to mention, the cutoff date is February 28 to sign up for the Tiffin Police Department Citizens Academy. Classes start Sunday, March 19, from 12:30 to 3:00, and runs for 11 weeks, and it is fun, very interesting, and I highly recommend it. So if you can participate and dedicate the time, please sign up. It sounds like they're filling up, and so if you are interested, go over to the police department and get an application. Highly recommend it if you have a chance to do that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions from the mayor? All right, thank you. Clerk of Counsel Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
Madam President, I have the financial report for January of 2023. Total receipts for the month were $3,587,278. Total expenses for the month were $3,451,265.65. The general fund unencumbered balance was $4,366,151.34. Income tax receipts for January 2023 were $1,147,117.68. This is a decrease from January 2023 to January 2022 of $201,227.69. Overall, year-to-date, it's a decrease of 14.92% when comparing to two years. The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for January 2023 was $141,488.2. The unexpendited balance for all funds is $36,263,038.68, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kathy. Councilmember Reesner.
Motion to accept the finance director's January report and bankrupt reconciliation.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve the finance director's report and bankrupt reconciliation for the month of January. It's their second. Councilmember Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I know everything's okay with the city finances, but I just want the community to know the city council's looking over these reports, we're just not accepting them. I think the city needs to know where some dollars are going, and one item jumped out at me, and maybe we don't have an answer tonight, but I saw a case check, January 6, 2023, to Adams Tree Service for $6,100. And I guess I'm just curious, what did Adams Tree Service do for us that the city crew could not do for themselves? Don't need an answer tonight?
Yeah, I can address that for Councilmember Jones. The short answer is nothing. We are capable of doing just about everything, but there are situations in which it is in the city's interest to utilize an outside service like Adams. Primarily, we contract tree removals in two different situations. One is larger trees that don't pose an immediate threat or hazard, but still need to be removed. The second is when we have big jobs that need to happen quickly, for instance, on a state highway where there's a tree and it needs to be removed. For us to go on a state highway, we need six people to remove that tree. That's about 50% of the entire Public Works Department. It's cheaper for us to have that tree taken down by someone like Adams, so that we can continue to do the other work the department has to do, the sewer work, et cetera. And actually, they can do it less expensively than we can when we have to dedicate six people to that project, so it actually saves the city some money. Our arborists and assistant arborists prioritize their time doing emergency tree removals, pruning, and proactive pruning, and then planting. So they're, the two of them are pretty busy, as you know, maintaining the, some 9,000 trees we have in the urban forest. And the pruning is really beginning to help us not have to take down as many trees. So this proactive pruning program, as they go sector by sector through the city, is really beginning to reap some benefits for us. I think last year, we had to take down something like 40 trees. We're hoping that'll be less than 10 with an active pruning program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Kathy. Director of Law Brent T. Howard.
Yes, thank you. Couple items for council. First, you may have received or seen in media reports that the Tiffin Riverfront Development, they made a significant step in their project. They purchased the Kier property at 6 East Market Street. The purchase price was $750,000. The developer created a legal entity, a new limited liability company, to purchase the property. I understand, in talking with their legal counsel, that there was no mortgage, and I did not find one, so they used cash to purchase this property. I understand from the developer himself, so they did make a significant step towards getting into the project finally. In the next 30 days, I expect to receive more details about the lending that they require for the project. You may remember that there were several aspects of this project, the financing. There are equity investors. There is one primary lender, a private lender, a bank. They also are monetizing the PACE financing and TIF financing that you helped participate in. So that, I understand, in the next 30 days, the details of that financing will be finalized, and we should receive a report. About that same time, I hope to have the details of the developer's financial contribution towards the parking lot. This is a city parking lot that will be impacted by the project, and improvements are necessary, we believe. We have worked up with our city engineer estimates for the work that we think needs to be done. Also, we believe the river wall, that the city owns, will be impacted, and there are additional financial contributions we'd like to develop or make, to make. And we hope to have those discussions completed within the next 30 days, so that when I come back to you with the details, you can actually approve then those contributions, because those are a necessary part of the project. You may recall that you passed legislation, but some of the details, the developer has to come back and provide to you, so then you can finalize the TIF that you had previously approved by ordinance. So there are progress being made, and I wanted to give you that report as part of the council meeting. I know, again, you probably have... I know, again, you probably have seen the media reports about the work. Are there any questions that anyone has that I can try to answer at this point? If not, the other item I have, I have signed up for and will be attending the open meetings, public records, training this Friday, the 24th. And I will do that on your behalf, so that'll be part of, for our audit trail, that we've satisfied that requirement of your attendance through a designee, as you did at your last meeting. I will provide you a report then with the highlights of that, that training session. So I will then share that as you should learn something. It shouldn't just be me attending. Really, you should be, I should bring something back to you so that you can go forward, move forward with some additional knowledge on, on those areas of law. So I will give you a report prior to this next meeting on March 6th. Any questions for me?
Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Director of Law, you mentioned this Friday, 24th. What time was that? Is that Zoom or is that open meeting?
It is a virtual meeting. So you could sign up if any of you would like to attend. I believe it's 9:00 in the morning to 12:15.
9:00 AM?
That's right.
Let me see, I get up at 8:00? Oh, you know that, nevermind.
Councilmember Spar.
Regarding this Friday's meeting, I just tried to sign up and it's closed. You can't, it's full and you can't. So the next virtual meeting you can sign up for is April 11th, which I've signed up for.
Well, thank you for that heads up.
You get to sleep in.
Yeah. And that's in the afternoon, that's 1:00 to 4:15.
I did receive a copy of it, if anybody would like it, on the Sunshine Law.
I might pick you up on that.
It's a long meeting, but it is worthwhile. There's a lot of really good information in those sessions.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other questions for the law director? Okay, thank you. We are now under written communications.
We have Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-11. Appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Fred Shelt.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-11 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-15. Appointment to Sandusky County, Seneca County, City of Tiffin, Port Authority of Bill Black.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-15 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-16. Changes to Codified Ordinance 149, Appointments and Promotions, Police and Fire Departments.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-16 will also be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-17. Changes to Codified Ordinance 143, Fire Department Revisions.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-17 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
And Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-18. Changes to Codified Ordinance 142, Fire Department Alarm Systems.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 23-18 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. You sure? Okay, thank you. We are now under motions, any motions this evening? Okay, seeing none, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution Number 23-9, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving Mayor's appointment of Michael Hayes to serve a term on the City of Tiffin Local Board of Tax Review from the effective date of this resolution until December 31st, 2025. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, they must have gotten stuck behind. I apologize. I got put in front of it. Okay, start again. Resolution Number 23-3. Introduced by Ken Jones. Resolution authorizing the sale during calendar year 2023 of municipally-owned personal property which is not needed for public use or which is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by Internet auction pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 721.12D, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Resolution 23-3. Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of Resolution 22-3 and declaring an emergency.
23-3, okay. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 23-3 and declaring an emergency. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Reason for the emergency is the sooner we can sell this unused property, the sooner we can put it to good use. So that's my reasoning for emergency.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 7 to 0. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Resolution 23-3 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Resolution Number 23-5, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, WPCLF, agreement on behalf of the City of Tiffin for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities involving CSO Basin 24 and 30 Inflow Reduction Project, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Resolution 23-5.
Now Resolution 23-9, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving Mayor's appointment of Michael Hayes to serve a term on the City of Tiffin Local Board of Tax Review from the effective date of this resolution until December 31st, 2025.
This is the first reading of Resolution 23-9. Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 23-9.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 23-9. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Resolution 23-9 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Resolution Number 23-10, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving Mayor's appointment of Nicole Miller to serve a term on the Thomas Connor Memorial Commission from the effective date of this resolution until December 31st, 2025.
This is the first reading of Resolution 23-10. Councilmember Perry.
Madam President, I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 23-10.
Thank you. There's a motion for resolution, for passage of Resolution 23-10. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Resolution 23-10 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Resolution Number 23-11, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving Mayor's appointment of Ken Baker to serve a term on the Tree Commission from the effective date of this resolution until December 31st, 2025.
This is the first reading of Resolution 23-11. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 23-11.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 23-11. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Resolution 23-11 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Resolution Number 23-12, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving Mayor's appointment of Jose Ardeus Jr. to serve a term on the Thomas Connor Memorial Commission from the effective date of this resolution until December 31st, 2025.
This is the first reading of Resolution 23-12. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 23-12.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 23-12. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Resolution 23-12 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance Number 23-4, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded or the city administrator to competitively bid for the purchase of road salt.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 23-4.
Ordinance Number 23-5, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for, and receive bids, and recommend and execute a contract for the 2023 street paving program, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 23-5.
Ordinance Number 23-6, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for engineering, design, and consulting services for flow monitoring as part of the city's sanitary sewer long-term control plan.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 23-6.
Ordinance Number 23-7, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for, and receive bids, and recommend and execute a construction contract for the CSO Basin 24 and 30 Inflow Reduction Project, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 23-7.
Ordinance Number 23-8, introduced by Kevin Reisner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $9,000 into the city administrator and general administration budgets.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 23-8.
Ordinance Number 23-9, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to a Community Reinvestment Area Tax Exemption Agreement, to sign the agreement to the new property owner of 1630 West Market Street where the Tim Hortons store is located, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-9. Councilmember Leopard.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask for the suspension of City Council's three-reading rule and passage of Ordinance Number 23-9.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of Council's three-reading rule and suspension of Ordinance 23-9. Is there a second? Councilmember Spar.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you. There's a second, there's a motion and a second for passage of Ordinance 23-9. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 7 to 0. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 7 to 0. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-9 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance Number 23-10, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a three-year contract with the Seneca Regional Chamber of Commerce for marketing and tourism-related services, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-10.
Ordinance Number 23-11, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for, and receive bids, and recommend and execute a construction contract for the Hedges Boyer Park Hillside Reconstruction Project, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-11. Councilmember Leopard.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask for the suspension of City Council's three-reading rule and passage of Ordinance Number 23-11.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Council's three-reading rule and suspension of Ordinance 23-11. Is there a second? Councilmember Reisner.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I attended the meeting. I think I know the answer, but I think the public would like to hear an answer also. And this is the month of February. I guess, what is the reason for bypassing the three-reading rule and declaring an emergency on this outdoor project?
Councilmember Leopard, sorry.
Bidding, approving, and contractors' length of time to even show up on the job. Contractors are busier than all get out, and to get a contractor in here as soon as possible, I think some parity for the erosion.
And law director.
The question that Councilman Jones raised was discussed this morning at the department head meeting. And the Parks and Recreation Director, Coon, had a good answer. Part of the specifications that will be prepared will have certain dates around which we do not want the contractor to be working, maybe blocking the area because of special events at the park. And so the earlier we can bid this out, the contractor can look at the construction season schedule for this year and plan out those, the timing of the work that needs to be done so it doesn't interfere with all these events, the better price we should get as a city. If we wait, we will compress that time, and it'll end up costing us more money. So this allows us to have a better schedule and hopefully the lowest cost possible.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 7 to 0. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes. Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-11 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 23-12 introduced by Vicki Wilkins. Ordinance authorizing the board of control to award and the city administrator to execute one or more contracts to purchase and install four emergency sirens in the city, amending the budget for the expense of the contracts and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-12. Councilmember Wilkins.
Yep. I'd like to ask for a suspension of council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance 23-12.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 23-12. Is there a second? Councilmember Reisner.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wilkins.
I just want to reiterate in my report earlier today, there is a, this is an emergency because one of the sirens is not working and the other three are 40 to 50 years old. So in terms of public emergency and safety, that we would like to get this done.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-12 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
And that concludes the legislation.
Thank you. We are now under other business. Yes, Councilmember Perry.
First, I would like to schedule a personnel and labor relations meeting, Councilmember Spar and Thacker. Any day that works better for you guys?
How soon are we thinking? This week or next?
Probably next week, I'm thinking.
Yeah, next week's easier for me.
Okay. You just want to do Monday? Does that work?
That works for me.
Okay.
Let me check one thing really quickly.
Check my other calendar. Yep.
Yeah, Monday, Monday should be fine as long as it's after 5:15-ish.
You just want to say 5:15?
Yep.
Okay, cool. I'd like to announce a personnel and labor relations meeting next Monday. The, let me see, February 27th at 5:15 to discuss mayor's request for legislation 23-11, 23-15, 23-16, 23-17, 23-18, and any other business to come before the committee.
Sorry.
Thanks a lot, Bridgette.
He jinxed himself.
You got that report, you coming up with this. Also, I'd like to bring something else up. Obviously, looking at the reports that were coming out about the petitions that got thrown out, I know we're not the board of elections. We're totally separate, but that directly impacts this body. So in Dan Perry's mind, I think, you know, becoming a candidate should be as easy as writing your name and saying, "I want to be a candidate," and let the voters decide. I think that's, the more choices Tiffin voters have, the better for Tiffin in general. I wish we had 100 candidates that the voters could choose from. And taking some of the voters out of it, I think, is shameful in my mind. So either A, I'd like to discuss, you know, with the law director, obviously, you would have way more knowledge than I do about what power we have on, you know, maybe if we can give a list of approved or, you know, people that want to run to the board of elections and they run that elections, or if we have a sit-down with the board of elections and discuss either A, a process that they can do better, maybe explaining better to the candidates. I mean, if it happened to one person, I get it, but it happened to two people that are in our, you know, in our, in this room. So obviously, something's not working. And I missed it, you know, a couple of years ago. So the circulator part, you know, I didn't see it. I didn't know how to fill it out because I, you know, took it around myself. I don't, I didn't have anybody take the petition around. So it was very unclear. It wasn't easy to understand. It's a complicated, you know, none of us are lawyers and we don't know every single, you know, word of the charter either. But I would, I just ask Brett, you know, what power we have within, from a city perspective on, you know, where it goes from the board of elections and stuff like that.
Law Director.
Yeah, a couple of comments. If you wanted to make any changes, they have to be changes to the city charter and the voters approve the charter. So you would have to go about creating a request to the voters essentially, and there's a process for that. You don't have to wait the full 10 years to the next mandatory charter review. You could present an issue to the voters with changes that you want them to consider for the nominating process. So that's one comment. The other comment is I understand the concern because, you know, I was part of the charter review process 10 years ago, 10-plus years ago, and this time, and we've tweaked the petition each time. So, you know, and I hate to see somebody who desires to be nominated and be on the ballot and they're not able to because they don't make the, all the requirements. So I've thought long and hard about what we could do. And there probably are things in addition to having the petition, which is already prescribed by the charter. There are things that we could add to what the board of elections provides to the candidates. And that's not our responsibility. In fact, in some ways, we have, we can't require them to do other, anything other than exactly what the charter says. But I would assume that they would be willing to provide information that we would want to give to the prospective candidates in addition to the form of the petition. And that may mean a meeting with them of some people from the city and the board. I would kind of welcome that and I'm open to suggestions. I've heard tonight a suggestion about increasing the instructions, making it very clear what each section means. And there's different ways that we can do that to make it as easy as possible, if that's the intent. Provide the exact language of Article 10 in the charter, which is the nominating process so they can see clearly the instructions. You know, this is exactly what the voters approved. I don't think they have that. It's available, but it's not given to them with the petition and maybe it should be. So I welcome any other ideas that people have and will definitely, myself, provide some information to the board of elections office. But maybe we need to do that in a more formal way. So those are my initial comments to what you said.
Councilmember Spar.
In addition to that, I want to make something clear. I found myself and I think other people thought, well, if you have questions about your petition, clearly you should go to the board of elections and ask. And I am told by the board of elections and as I looked into it elsewhere, the Secretary of State's office encourages the board of election to not answer specific questions. Doesn't forbid them, but encourages them not to answer them because you can get yourself in some legal trouble if you were to get bad advice. So they encourage those officials that you see, you know, Jim and Lori and those persons not to give advice on how to fill out your petition. And that's, that's a roadblock because who do you ask then? And with a brand-new petition that nobody in this room has ever seen, where do you get that information? There is a place. You can go to the charter. But people in this room may know about the charter, but anybody else, you know, really doesn't know how to look for that. And I think that's just a general failure. I wouldn't pin that on anybody in particular. It's just one of those things. And unfortunately, it came up here. So that's, that's my two cents about that. And what else? I told the law director earlier about my ideas about how we can solve that problem. I don't know that there's a problem with the charter. I don't know that there's anything that needs to be changed about the charter itself except to make sure that we give potential candidates proper instructions. I would have been in the same boat had I not withdrawn my at-large petition because I didn't fill out that block either. I had that. So had I gone through, I'd be sitting here not on the ballot as well. And that would be four people. I mean, and that's just, in my mind, four too many.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, let the voters decide rather than, you know, a board of three, four people in my mind, so. I mean, I get that we have to follow the rules and there, you know, there are a certain precedent, but obviously, something is wrong here. If three people in this room would have had it wrong and we'd had three people, you know, disqualified from running for council, and we need, you know, strong leadership right now more than ever.
Is this something that we think that we want to maybe assign to a committee to just discuss further and some ideas of maybe what we think based upon the direction and advice that the law director gave? In my mind, Councilman Perry, if you, if you already have a meeting on the books plus kind of given the context of the situation, maybe it perhaps would make sense to add it to the agenda for your meeting on Monday.
I'd be good with that.
Yes, Councilmember Wilkins.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry, for bringing this up. I just wanted to, I guess, maybe publicly explain myself as to what happened. So first, I'm running for a position. I believed that when I was reading, you're handed a sheet of paper that Law Director Howard explained, steps one through 20. And I'm a pretty cross-T-dot-I type person. And I just went, okay, I did number one, I did number two. And when I signed my name and then below that on the petition is where that box is. So at that point, I figured I completed what I needed to complete. I signed my name. Bad on me for not knowing the city charter. However, I was following the instructions that were handed to me. And for myself, I, when I read the word committee, I'm like, well, I don't have a committee. I'm Vicki, just getting signatures. So that was how I thought it is. I'm a committee of one. So just kind of, hopefully, people are reasonable and understand that it was, I felt I completed it how I was supposed to complete it. I thought I was following the instructions and simply on the one page, the one through 20, 21, make sure you fill out your three-person committee, that's simply solved there. But I would be happy, I will be out of town next week, so I won't be able to attend your meeting, but I would be happy to review that page as well because I think Law Director Howard did mention instructions that would be helpful when you're receiving that petition